To the regular board meeting, committee meeting for Ableton 2018. We will not do the flip since we've already done that. Our discussion items, the first thing under discussion items is enrollment. Dr. Sago.
You're madam president. I recognize that enrollment will probably be a conversation that we hold quite often. And the documents that you see attached in Board Docs were prepared by someone who's very special. She's here with us this evening. Her name's Kimberly Cottrell. She is our EMIS coordinator. And EMIS in the state of Ohio stands for Education Management Information System. And that really means that every student of ours has very specific coding and they are accounted for throughout the state. So if a child comes to us from somewhere in Ohio, we get all of their information from that school district. And there's really a measure of what comes of that information. And it's pretty fluid and it's all electronic. And so we thank Kimberly for all that she does to make that process work for us because, as you know, that equates to a lot of funding. And so it's important that our role be accurate. So we tried tonight to prepare for you information that is as accurate as possible and it's ever evolving. Just note that it's a representation. And when we talk about enrollment, I think about how we can certainly increase our enrollment because we're always wanting to make sure that students or children in our community get the very best education. And we believe that that's what we provide. So I will go through there are seven components to this report. And again, I, we could spend actually quite a bit of time on this this evening. So my intention is simply just to explain enough for you to be able to review these documents more thoroughly and they will prompt more discussion for us in the days and even perhaps months ahead. So if I turn to the very first component of the report, which simply is educated and house enrollment and withdrawal trends. What we did in preparation for this report was simply to go back to 2011, 2012 and compare the number of students who enrolled and the number of students who withdrew. And then on that very first page, you see where they withdrew to, perhaps to other schools in Cincinnati, out of the state, out of the country, to non-public schools. You also see that we took a glimpse really close at what had just happened in 2016, 2017. Now, you'll immediately think with our withdrawals and our enrollments that what happens in the month of October because they seem off the chart. What I'd like for you to notice there is that the month of October represents June, July, August, and September. So that's why October seems to be an extraordinary month. It's really our first litmus test of checking to make sure who's where in the state of Ohio. So there are four times that we do that through the course of the year, but that's just, that's one thing I wanted to point out with that first page. You'll notice too, when it comes to withdrawals on the bottom right-hand side, when we take a look at 2016, 2017, it appears that our dropout rate is notably higher. I don't have a lot of explanations for that other than think that it could, could have a lot to do with certainly high expectations from the state with regard to graduation. I know that's something that I'm highly sensitive to and that is dropouts. We certainly want to increase graduates and decrease dropouts.
So do we have, or can we get like an average grade level for the dropouts? Is there any way to capture that?
I'm sure we could capture that. I'm sure we could capture that.
Because I'd be interested in seeing, you know, when the majority really make that decision. Because then we can identify ways to head that up before.
Keep in mind, our students who defer their graduation, so they're considered dropouts.
If they defer and go to the Oaks?
That's right.
Don't finish the Oaks, that's considered a dropout.
That's right. That's what they finish.
Now, do they, even if they meet graduation requirements but do not finish the Oaks requirements, they still consider a dropout?
Even if they meet the Oaks requirements and complete their program at the Oaks or whatever program after high school, if they do not take their diploma at graduation and continue on with any other program, they count as a dropout for us.
The next year they're after, if their program was a year long, they could be captured as a five-year graduate, but very often the programs are longer than a year. Look, all of them are missing.
Yeah, so it affects most of our students who may have more involved disabilities that attend Pathways or Project Search, but then also our students who complete, stay with us through 12th grade and then go to the Oaks for career tech school. And that's two years. Most of those programs are all two years.
One thing I might add is that the dropout rate for 16, 17 is much higher because it's not strictly dropouts. It is also those students who are no longer eligible to be enrolled within our district. Let's say.
They age out?
No, it's a question of moving out. We, you know, we catch them in a residency issue and then they are withdrawn as no longer eligible to be enrolled in the district.
And that counts as a dropout for us?
Yes, it does. If, if that, if they procrastinate in enrolling elsewhere, the original signature out takes them out of the system. And that's, we're a little more vigilant in that regard and that's why that is significantly higher.
So getting records requests from another school that they perhaps go to is really important, us finding that student. And we recently, perhaps we've all heard about ECOH, how they recently closed and we went to great lengths to try to find students where they ended up or where they enrolled now so that they didn't count against us.
So how many of that number now is ECOH related?
Well, I don't think many, I don't think that number would represent ECOH right now because they haven't re-enrolled with us.
Right.
So I'll turn to the next page. And again, this page, I just want to give you enough information that you can reread it for what it is. For example, ADM stands for Average Daily Membership. SY, of course, is School Year. And you'll see that this is a breakdown from month to month with regard to withdrawals and enrollment. So it helps you just see the numbers in each grade level. And so I know that will take a lot of analyzing on your part. It's something that a lot of people often like to sit down with and really investigate. So I will certainly be willing to entertain your questions as we move throughout the next weeks and months, that's for sure. The next sheet is about district identified students and those students who are educated elsewhere. So on the left side, you'll notice a bar graph that simply identifies our students who are special education or receive special services and what category that they would, that they fall into. And then it tells you how many that are categorically in that category. And it gives you, of course, 2011, 2012, as well as 2016, 2017. I also, on the right side of that, I just want to point, point out that OE stands for Open Enrollment. And these are students that because they are special ed, they can partake in either the John Peterson Scholarship or the Autism Scholarship and go to another school. Or these are, and I want to point out that these are all special education students. So students resident court placed elsewhere or perhaps open enrolled elsewhere or attending a joint vocational school. The next few pages are just, just to inform you of the breakdown. So if you see social studies where it says high school, middle school, current capacity, if you see social studies four or five times, that means we have four social studies teachers. And then it'll give you the number of students that, that that teacher is serving in that content area. We did the same for high school, middle school. You'll see that we've tried to elaborate on the next page, the, the department capacity. You'll notice .5 means a half of a full-time equivalent, which means we would share that teacher with the high school or and share with the middle school. You'll notice we have a number of teachers that teach English and part of that is simply to provide smaller groupings in that very, very specific content area. And you'll notice that we do that in the core courses, you know, for example, reading, writing, math.
So the capacity, and I apologize for asking the question.
No, that's okay.
So the capacity page, number four, so that's how many, that's the maximum number of students we would want for that department?
That shows you what we're at right now, how many we're serving. So it's essentially the same as the page before, it just looks different.
It just looks different?
Right. So for example, two pages, three pages before you saw the actual breakdown.
Okay.
This is just showing it to you in bar graph form. We were trying to connect with folks who saw things in graph version or number version.
Right. And that's fine. It's just that when I.
It can be confusing.
When I talk about capacity, to me, that means, you know, the maximum amount that we could possibly serve, given our current infrastructure.
Right.
So, you know, there's a number that we are currently serving, but what could we potentially cram in here?
Yeah, it's, it's safe to say that we are not at capacity.
Okay.
In the following page, you'll see a color coding, red, orange, yellow, green, blue. And that shows you, of course, a listing of all of our teachers and the semesters, of course, of students that are enrolled in their coursework. And you'll see that for the middle school staff as well, as well as intervention. And then we tried to do the same thing for you when it came to elementary. So we did that for Norwood, Sharpsburg, Williams. And then following that, you'll see current grade level, if you will, the term used somewhat loosely compared to what you were describing, Mr. Atwood, that we use the term capacity.
Right, that's, and that's.
Yeah.
So the, the highlighted teachers, the ones that are doing five bells, those are the ones that are working all bells, no planning? Is that my understanding? Or is there a reason there are certain teachers highlighted?
What page are you on?
Looking at the capacity study overall, where the teacher's listed.
So five bells would mean they have two bells. So one of those is likely a duty. In fact, in that case, those folks are working lunch duty.
Okay.
And then they, of course, their other bell would be a plan, which would be a full seven bell schedule. Are you looking at middle school?
Well, it's, there's no page numbers on here, so it's hard to tell you where we are. So I think I'm on the page that says current classroom staff Norwood View. And if you scroll down, there's a number of teachers that are color coded at the bottom of that.
That's just simply to indicate that they teach school-wide.
Okay.
So all students in the school that would benefit from, from.
Intervention.
Right, right. So when I say all school, that could be any grade level.
Right.
So we continue with that breakdown for you for Williams Avenue Elementary. And we end with, with the last four pages, if you will, of the document. And please, please know that, you know, my hope and certainly intentions are to attract families back to Norwood. There's another way to increase enrollment and that perhaps is, in some school districts, they've entertained open enrollment. I'm certainly not indicating that at all, but I'm just simply being honest in how you could potentially increase enrollment with our existing staff. And perhaps even, I've given you some information if we add preschool. I, I will say there are some indications in the pages that follow that indicate that some rooms perhaps are not being used. And I can tell you at our elementary level, there are not classrooms going unused at all. They are, as far as space is concerned, really crowded. I do also want to indicate the fourth page from the very end, which simply says elementary teaching capacity, enrollment growth, and add preschool. That is based on the, this is all based on the concept that perhaps, and again, it's just a number, 20. If every home room was 20, then we could potentially add 134 more students and then what that would mean to us monetarily. Of course, we know every solution could have, perhaps bring more problems.
Right.
So when I say that, every solution could, of course, bring more money in. It could also cost more. You'll notice also in the pages that follow some negative numbers. And that continued to go with the idea that, well, if you had 20 students in a classroom, then you wouldn't need any new students in that grouping. So you would need to take away minus three. So if there were 23 presently in that group, then they would take away three. And of course, that indicates that we don't want to take away students, but it simply just remains constant with the theme of 20.
Okay.
And again, this is just food for thought. This is a beginning of sharing some information with you to get you thinking about enrollment. Know that it is something that is at the forefront. Know that I have met with Hamilton County Educational Service Center to reach out to them. We met actually yesterday, Mrs. Cheston and I. And we discussed certainly branding and marketing. And we intend to work a great deal more on that effort in our days ahead because that's our intention. We want everyone to have the great experience of being an enrolled graduate. So that concludes my report and information with regard to enrollment.
Thank you.
Next item is Allison.
I'd just like to inform everyone that we did meet with realtors this week. Cherry and Scott were part of that. And I do intend to take our realtors through the form, or the Allison, so that they can see it as it is now. I think they'll recognize, I think it's been unused for about seven, going on eight years. And so it's important that whichever realtor we decide to go with, that we certainly make sure that they know what it is that they're going to sell.
You guys met with the realtors?
We did.
What was your impression?
One of them, in my opinion, one of them went above and beyond and really sold beyond. I feel really strongly about one of them compared to the others we've handled.
Yeah, we both feel that what we would recommend to both, to the rest of our board members to vote on would be the one, we both came out with the same opinion, just leaps and bounds better than the other one, we believe. They'll really do a great job. Throwing a wider net.
And I did send that out today as a separate attachment. And it's also part of this too.
For which one was preferred?
The CBRE.
CBRE was.
Yes. And I sent, earlier today, I sent an email with just theirs.
So that's, just making sure I'm looking at the right.
Yeah, that's.
This is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did they defer home work to a, to a particular?
Because, because I read, I read both of these proposals initially. And let me tell you, they were very, two different.
Two different schools apart.
Right. Very different school. I was really.
I concur with that.
I, I, my eyes lit up when I saw one of them.
Yes. Personally too. Personally too.
Yeah.
I think that's what prompted my thinking that they needed to take a tour.
Yeah.
And I would like to invite anyone here that would like to be a part of that, just let me know and I will certainly add you to that invitation.
I would, yeah, I'll take you.
Okay. If I'm not working, I'll definitely be there.
Okay.
But the eye-catching portion wasn't really what drew me towards them.
That's a Wednesday.
That would be a nice, but it's not, not the thing that drew me rightly.
What, I'm sorry. I could hear you. What, we weren't impressed with their.
Yeah, they were, they were very impressed with the professional.
Their enthusiasm, their ability to, to even speculate that those may be options, the numbers may be options, whereas the other one was basically put on us. So, let it go.
Yeah.
So they, they didn't want to put any up for it.
So having somebody that has faith in our vision for the building is definitely crucial.
Yeah.
And hungry for a sale.
Yes, very hungry for the sale.
I'm too hungry.
And get the experience under the belt.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do they, do they really think they could sell it for?
Well, they told us that the reason they came up with that, the analysis, was based
on the square footage of what those types of buildings are going for in Norwood specifically. But Norwood is a very hot area.
It is.
And, you know, they did their research on specifically other buildings have sold so much per square footage. And based on the square footage of that building, a developer could come in and be profitable, putting a ton of money into it to re-admit.
Right.
And still be profitable afterwards. So.
Yeah, I thought that was the interesting difference is that they approached it more from a, just as you said, what price point would make the project profitable? Now, that's their opinion and a developer may or may not agree with that, but it does give you a different perspective in how to go about it.
I mean, we even discussed, you know, talking to a developer about building residential houses. And they talked about footprint not being large enough to have a develop, that the footprint isn't large enough for a developer to come in and build residential housing in that footprint and then make money. So that just wasn't feasible in that spot. So, you know, they're, they went over a lot of different ideas and things, but they, they felt pretty confident that, you know, based on where we're at in our location and the building, and especially the one historic, that, you know, they'd be able to cast a wide net and get some interest.
Okay.
So.
Good deal because otherwise, I mean, if we were just going to, for lack of a better term, let it go, I definitely think that there could be other options for us that we would want to seriously consider. But if they think that they can cast that wide net and get it for that market value, then there's no reason for us to increase, re-increase our maintenance square footage. Because that's a, that's an issue now that it is.
Even if they get a proportion of that market value.
Right.
If they don't even get the full market value that they think they'd get it for, then it's worth it for us to, well, they build that.
So does it say in here what the contract term length?
No, because we didn't address that.
Yeah, it's, it actually. It speaks to the six months in their commission. It's in that proposal.
Yeah. But we, we didn't go into details of what we can put in the contract because we hadn't picked them up.
Right, right. I was just wondering what they were thinking as far as.
I think in their initial, about 16 to 19 days, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. There's, the, the city will have a number of hoops for them to jump.
Right, exactly.
Right. And they don't move very quickly. Okay.
So our next step will be to get them to tour.
Next item is the forecast update from a compliance filing.
Okay, well, we last looked at this in January and you do have it in Board Docs, but I prepared a separate, kind of a shorter report that I wanted to review with you first. Sorry, it's in paper format.
I prefer that.
But it's, it just speaks to the permanent improvement fund because the permanent improvement fund is also a part of this process, as is a, a large construction project. So I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to revisit how the construction project's being funded and also the cash flow expectations that I have for the permanent improvement fund over the next five years. In the top portion of this, you see the pie chart. This 41 and a half, $41.6 million project was, is funded by two separate levies. The first is a bond levy that support, supported the $31,310,000 bond issue that was completed last March, I'm sorry, last May in terms of actual dollars. And so that levy is currently at 4.64 mils and that is, will service and already has started servicing the repayment of that debt. The other portion of this project is to be supported from a separate borrowing issue that will be supported by the permanent improvement project. That debt has not been issued yet because the money's not needed yet. So it will be after the $31 million is nearly spent, that will go out to market and issue the second round of debt for that. And the revenue from the permanent improvement fund will support that issue. But in addition to that, as part of the original plan, the intent was also to have a revenue stream for technology, equipment, and other needs that the district has on an annual basis as well, that are capital needs that we're trying to carry in the general fund now, but it's a burden to the general fund. So the twofold piece to this is, is in that pie chart, but there's another sliver of that that's also not included. So in other words, that $10,285 borrowing, the smaller part of the, the pie chart, that's actually serviced by about one-half of the permanent improvement fund revenue, $475,000 a year. The other $475,000 a year is available. Obviously, the conservative thing that you probably have already picked up on is we're waiting till we get farther into this project to have some confidence. You know, we're very excited about the, the bid that we got for the middle school. But until we get through, significantly through the bid estimates for the elementary school, the, the confidence will keep rising. And I believe that it will. But we don't, we want to be on the conservative side of that. So what I have presented in the lower half of this page is to assume that we basically will not be using those resources in any way. The general fund will continue to transfer into the permanent improvement fund. That's the third set of bars, the third column there. There would be an annual transfer. In fact, I would recommend that we do that by June 30th for this year. It's in the forecast as it is for every year in the forecast. The fourth bar of this is routine equipment expense. And that's just an estimate. We have not spent at that level in the past routinely, but it just gives you some comfort margin to take care of those things annually. And on the other piece of this, the Chromebooks that will be replaced next year, that's been the million two that has been planned for that is in here. And in the final column of expenditures, you will see that we'll start servicing the debt in fiscal year 2021. So that gives you a view that the PI fund will remain solid. It's a, it's a good backup support for both the general fund and the construction project in terms of these kinds of expenditures and in terms of whether or not the general fund would continue with those transfers every year. The first column, as you can see, is really the true revenue that comes in from that. And we started this out, this fiscal year with $2,885,000. So it just gives you a roadmap, if you will, of that PI running parallel to the forecast. Any questions on that?
Mrs. Trustor, help me understand.
Yes.
So the potential renewal of a levy in 2021, does that, is that included in the past in this?
No, that's a good question. The, the renewal levy is strictly an emergency operating levy for the general fund that was originally approved in 2011. So it is separate. That'll be in the forecast discussion. The levy that is in the permanent improvement fund is continuing already. So there will not be a need for another vote on that levy. And that also was necessary to be able to, to go to market and issue debt. Because if it was a renewal levy, obviously the issuance of debt would be difficult. But by it being an ongoing levy, that can be used as a source of revenue. Anything else on the PI fund? Okay, I, I wanted to highlight a few pages in the forecast document and obviously entertain questions as we go, so don't hesitate. I'm going to start, if you don't mind, on page four. And at the top of page four, it's a little bit hard to see the page numbers at the bottom there, but it will say revenue overview. Like many governmental entities and school districts, the table at the top really depicts the challenge that we have, that while there may be improvement in some areas, there's state funding that's not improving or decreasing. And so for the five-year forecast period, I'm projecting that average annual growth in revenue would be just .58%. So it's, it's fairly static in terms of our growth. Would we hope to do a little bit better than that? Of course we would, but we can't count on that today. It would take some other things to, and I will highlight a couple of those things that I think are positive that could certainly influence this. And one of those things, you've already taken a first step on and that's the TIF revenue. The next page that I wanted to talk to you about is on page 10, which speaks specifically to, on your way there, we should stop for just a moment at state funding, which is page seven. And on page seven, the top bar chart shows you our challenge. We are essentially now a guaranteed district, which means we're at the mercy of the state continuing to pay us at least what they paid us the year before. That's always debated every year by the legislature. Always a good idea to stay on top of that.
So that has nothing to do with tenant or enrollment?
No, because, well, it does because of our declining enrollment. The formula is not working. That's a good question too. The formula is not working sufficiently. And so the state, in one way of saying, it has to prop up the funding, has to provide guarantee dollars to make sure we get at least what we got the year before. It would take, one, it's in the detail of this, it would take about 119 students, increase in enrollment, to bring us. students increase in enrollment to bring us back to the place where there would start to be new state funding per pupil.
So how many years of declining enrollment consecutively do you have to have in order to switch funding categories and not be a guaranteed district, but actually get a lower funding amount? Isn't it like two or three years of declining enrollment?
If you have a five percent drop over a five-year period, there is a loss of revenue. I'm not projecting that to happen, doesn't mean that it won't.
Right.
And so if you look at the bottom table, you can see what we are projecting in terms of enrollment, sort of a worst-case scenario from today, from two thousand nineteen, which will be, the next biennial budget will actually start in fiscal year twenty. And, you know, we're hoping that we do better than that. But I will tell you that the current trend shows us with that decline before us.
So that number is minus four point two four percent.
Sure.
That's dangerously close to that five percent threshold. I mean, that's.
And again, that's not something we're in control of, and the formula may change in the next biennial budget in two thousand twenty, but it certainly speaks to the vibrant nature of a district is that its enrollment is at best staying the same, or at worst staying the same, and at best is increasing. What we do with that is we do these projections every year. We'll take a look at it and see if there's concern as we head out. But keep in mind that that impact would not be retroactive, it would start five years out in terms of a look back.
Right.
So there's just simply, the best-case scenario right now that's on the horizon is flat state funding, which frustrates board members, it frustrates superintendents, it frustrates taxpayers and everyone else. It is a challenge. The state, as usual, is working diligently on the next funding formula, so we'll see what two thousand twenty brings.
Let's hit page ten.
If you look at page ten, that is other revenue, which would not necessarily be, in a lot of districts, a huge line item. It's eleven point nine percent of our total revenue. And what makes it significant is that we do have a significant amount of TIF revenue. And the pieces that you have, the first piece that you have already started, and I appreciate, is that we are looking at several of those properties that have been abated, and we already have feedback from your appraiser that those values are worthy of challenge, and so that process is starting. We've already had one property owner call us and say, hey, can we discuss this? What are options? Those kinds of things. No property owner, by the way, wants to hear that their values are being challenged or going up, so that's to be expected. Dr. Sabo and I spent some time this afternoon, in fact, with our attorney, the one that you met at the last board meeting, Gary Stradonsky, to discuss that potential meeting. But that's a lot of sidebar information. The main piece to this is, it is, it's a big piece of revenue. Because of the performance of the TIF, with the lower values, I have bent those revenue projections back. And so what I would hope is that our work is successful and that we would see additional revenue here. Now, in terms of order of magnitude, you're looking at the potential for that to be anywhere from two to four hundred thousand dollars a year higher per year. Okay? So it's significant to look at. We are watching it, we're monitoring it, and we're doing something about it.
And those funds go directly back into the general fund?
Those are general fund dollars that initially have always been, the purpose is that even though they are not straight tax dollars, they help us to avoid being on the ballot sooner than we need to be.
Because that's almost the amount you were predicting for the two forty each year. If we pick up two hundred out of that alone, then that's going to help tremendously with that prediction amount to stay consistent each year. Up on, what was it, right here?
Okay.
The routine equipment expense, that would basically cover that.
Well, that's a completely separate budget, so that's.
I thought this was out of the general fund as well.
No, this part is not. That's just a side budget that if it's needed year to year, but thanks for asking that.
Okay.
There's a little bit in the general fund. For example, the textbooks, there's a certain amount of equipment that's already in the general fund. Those are things that we could either shift to the permanent improvement fund, or you may not do the transfers to help the general fund.
If we had those two.
So it's a different throttle in a way that you're actually in control of. This is another throttle that we're not completely in control of, but that we're saying, hey, we want, we want some role in this.
But if we could use that for those things, then we can move this around where we needed it to be.
Sure.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
So the other piece that's not in here, just full information, we have a new TIF very near here, of the Central Park Building, and that application is pending with the Ohio Department of Taxation. It can take one year to three years to get those approved, and before you actually start seeing the results of that. And so I have not included that in here. There could be in a net of an additional two hundred thousand a year. Those are just items that I don't, I'm not comfortable forecasting to include. I'm comfortable disclosing them and saying, those will help us, they will help us to go even farther. We don't have any new levies projected in this forecast period. There's not an indication in this forecast period to need new levies, only the renewal, which I'll discuss in a minute, that's not new, that's continuing of what we have. And so your hope is that by managing this source of revenue, that we'll be able to pick up some additional revenue beyond what's even in the forecast now.
So potentially between the challenge work that we're going down and this other new TIF project, that in maybe two or three years, we could see an increase of between four and five hundred thousand dollars?
Sure, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just look at it each year and check it.
Yeah.
You know, and we'll have more information a year from now than we do now on both of those efforts.
Do we receive any TIF dollars from all the new buildings that they put up by Xavier?
Yes.
All the shopping and restaurants and things like that?
We are also challenging that value because it dropped as part of the reappraisal. So that TIF will underperform from what was originally proposed in the development, unless that value's increased. So we are challenging that.
Okay. But that, those numbers aren't in here yet?
No, none of the challenges are in here yet. That, just to keep you up to speed, and the reason for the conversation today with the attorney for both sides of this, there's a lot of, it takes a lot of time to go through challenging these, and they can go all the way to basically court proceedings and disclosure, discovery and disclosure. So it can get very, very expensive. It's very time-consuming, and our job is to try to find a reasonable mix along the way. If that happens, if not, you have to stay the course, or I would certainly encourage you to. On the expenditure side, if you look at page twelve, starting out just like we did on the revenues, the expenditure overview, you can see that we're projecting expenditure, average annual increase operating, and I always refer to the first gray line there, which is four point one three percent. Just so you know, other total uses, that is primarily when you look at any kind of debt service, or you look at the transfers we're making. And so we are expecting to have four point one three percent pressure on our expenditures every year. During the past five years, they grew at two point four one. So what I would tell you is, I hope that we're south of four point one three, and, you know, we've got that two point four one as a previous guide. So what causes us to be higher this time? This is assuming current negotiated agreements. You all know, I informed you a few weeks ago, that our health insurance, compared to even the information we had as recent as January, is significantly more, and we have to be, we will have to communicate that to our employees as well here soon, that they are increasing the premium ten percent starting July first.
Right.
And that was not in the original projections from the consortium. And so we now have that incorporated in here, and in terms of both importance, because benefits are about seventeen, eighteen percent of the budget, you can see that it's the fastest annual growing category at five point four three percent.
Other than other objects?
Other than other objects, yes.
Yeah.
And other objects is a very small part of the budget, and for example, when you see the increase in two thousand eighteen, that primary reason for that is simply county auditor and treasurer fees, and those fluctuate from year to year.
Okay. So our forecast is four point one three percent, but we're also forecasting revenue growth at point, zero point five eight percent.
That's correct.
So we're, we're looking down the hole.
Yes. Expenditures are growing faster, projected to grow faster.
Correct.
Than revenue.
Okay.
I will tell you that I don't have other items to add to expenditures to say, gee, I think this could happen, or that could happen.
No, it's.
We've done the best that we can to include the things. There are certainly ideas that Dr. Sabo has been circulating, not for discussion at this point, that would look at how do we contain costs and how do we reduce costs? So from a board's perspective and administrative perspective, our job is to outperform these results.
Correct. Health insurance is a challenge. I mean, not, not just, I mean, every, health insurance is a challenge.
It is. And in my opinion, we don't have enough choices for our employees through the consortium, and so therefore, we're all pretty much locked into a same, almost traditional plan. It is updated in terms of copays and coverage, but there's not a lot of creative options to be able to say, hey, what would you choose? How do we introduce even greater consumerism in the process?
Right.
And those are things we'll have to work on with the consortium.
I was going to say, are we locked into the consortium, or is that part of the into agreement?
We are pretty much locked into the consortium because of the way it's organized, and our reserves are there.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's not been any reason to look at anything else. I mean, they have performed well. The rates are still, in terms of looking at statewide benchmarks, are comparable. The challenge is just that some consortiums will have one, two, or three options.
Right.
For employees to choose, and that, that enables that choice to really be a, almost a supply and demand on, the more expensive plans end up costing more. The better choice you make as an employee, the less you'll pay in terms of what plan will work for you. And I'm sure some of you have those options in employment now as well, so. Something we'll continue, obviously, to look at and try to influence. Also on expenditures, one of the key categories to talk about is one that has fluctuated on us a bit here recently on page fifteen, purchased services. Purchased services is approaching one-fourth of the budget, and one of the biggest pieces of this budget is tuition paid to, what I've labeled here, external service providers. Whether you would label them that way or not, I'm not sure, but for example, that's dollars that go to community schools, which by the way, is down significantly over last year. We're down about three hundred thousand dollars on that. But then it also includes a lot of special education tuition, things that we, big portions of our budget that Shannon works on and can easily become frustrated by because there's just not a lot of ability to influence those expenditures. It could even be dictated how those students are served and those kinds of things. And the problem is not on the service side of it. The problem is that the state only reimburses this, even though they mandate how you will serve, they reimburse this at about thirty cents on the dollar. And so to give you an example of that, we have a very, the possibility for a very high-cost student that Shannon has been working on for a very long time. We obviously can't go into specifics of that, but we're talking about a very expensive, maybe twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars a month to serve this person, this student, and the state's reimbursement on that will be forty cents on the dollar. So those things can get very expensive, and at the same time, there's not dollar-for-dollar help on those.
Is there any way to influence upcoming legislation on reimbursement of those? Is anybody aware of that?
Oh, sure, they're aware of it. They've been working on it for decades. The problem is, it's like most of the state budget, it's residual funding.
Right.
And so what's left goes here, and what's left goes here. And so I know from talking to a couple of people on the funding committee now that's working on it, you know, special education's a big, big issue. I hope they do. Yeah, I mean, in terms of being able to influence that, we always do. We just, in fact, on this one, we talked with the area coordinator, and, you know, we're trying to look for every source of funding for that, that's out there, that can help. So, but it's been an ongoing problem for some time. The need is growing exponentially. To give you an example of the challenge that it presented to public schools, there are autism scholarships now, there's Peterson scholarships, but I just spent a couple of minutes talking to you about your state funding being guaranteed.
Right.
And so while the legislature can say, pay this to this school and pay this to that school, there's no additional funding for that.
Yeah. I wonder, and I don't know the answer to this, and this is just an open question, but I wonder if there's an opportunity for some outside, outside grant money, especially for in extenuating circumstance, that doesn't happen every day, and that could suck a significant portion of our dollars.
Well, as you can imagine, every school has this challenge. Now, every school does not have the challenge of the, the large potential claim that I'm talking about.
Right.
But the interesting part, when I gave you that percentage reimbursement, that is the state's grant dollars for doing that.
No.
That is their catastrophic reimbursement, that's over and beyond what they normally reimburse for special ed.
And we pursue private grant dollars?
That's, that's what I'm wondering, is there private grant dollars out there that we could apply for?
No. Never when you need it, huh?
So it's not to belabor or admire the problem. It is to tell you that we are doing our best to account for it. We certainly do our best to look at these on case-by-case basis, and our, my job in this specific document is to do our best to prepare for it and not assume just dire consequences. We did assume that particular claim proceeding. And the other piece that's in this that I think is relevant, not because of the dollars spent, although they're significant, but because of the potential dollar change in utility costs, as we do get air conditioning in those buildings, you can imagine it's going to cost more. And so we have that line item projected to grow over the five-year forecast period from today's six hundred and fifty thousand dollar range to about a million-dollar range. My hope is it won't cost that, and my hope is it doesn't cost any more than that. But it's not that we sat here and we don't have that built in here, it's going to be a very evident cost, and, you know, we're excited actually by it, because we think that just as you're sitting in this room tonight, and it's warm and uncomfortable, we believe it'll help the academic environment immensely to be able to do that in all of our buildings.
Are those TIF dollars that you mentioned that we could potentially be getting after they evaluate all of that? I know you said it's limited on how we can use those funds. Would those funds be able to be applied to helping our students with special needs for those higher-cost items, or would we have to put it towards things in the building like a higher AC cost or energy output?
We're not really restricted on how to use the TIF dollars. They're just going to be general fund resources. And if we go back to the beginning, which I skipped over purposefully, and look at page three, I think I can help put that in perspective. I prefer the table at the top, there's a bar chart at the bottom, and there's a lot of my writing in between, and as small a font as I needed to make it fit in the box. But if we look at the table at the top of page three, to Brandon's specific remark that, well, expenditures are growing faster than revenue, they are. We certainly hope to outperform that. We hope to do better than four percent growth on expenditures, and I believe we will. There's always the potential that we could do worse than that. But what this information is telling us is that while we have built significant cash reserves, that as we head out the road here, and you certainly would not make a decision today, you would look at this incrementally and look at what changes can we make in two thousand nineteen? What changes will we make in two thousand twenty to get the compounded effect of that? Because the decisions that we're making now, our job is to continue to push out that need for any additional money from our taxpayers. And that plan is in place through two thousand twenty-two, and the reason that I've done my second document and made the entire administrative team sit through the detailed document yesterday, which I thought was brilliant, and which they told me an hour and a half later was not, I tried to do it this way because.
This is great.
The other side of the story to this is, there's more thought that's in this, there's more resources that's available to this board over time. You'll make good decisions every year, which is why, when you look at the bottom of that page that I handed out in paper format, that's why I would tell you to go ahead and transfer to the PI fund. I think that you should. I think that you should follow that plan and make those decisions each and every year. If we get news next year that, no, we can't perform better than 4%, or we aren't going to have additional TIF revenue, then you may rethink that. But you'll make those decisions every year, which is one of the reasons why I don't bring that transfer to you until the end of the fiscal year, for example. And so you have tools in the toolkit to help manage this even beyond fiscal year 2022. You're not going to, all you have to do is look at the state funding, page seven, you're not going to be able to go forever without asking for additional money. That's just the unfortunate part we're in, in part because, but before I leave this, are there questions about this financial summary? Because I do want to talk to you just a little bit about per pupil expenditures and our costs there.
No, I'm really interested about the per pupil expenditures.
So as you can see, just before we leave this executive summary then, we have a forecast that maintains cash reserves, adequate cash reserves through 2022, is not asking for any additional levies. And by November of 2021, which is three, almost three and a half years from now, we need for our voters to continue to support the levies that we have in existence today.
Correct.
Okay? And there's more to talk about in terms of that levy renewals status. I think it's early to do that, because anytime you mention levy, people will think you're asking them for more money. And that's not what we're doing at this point in time. There's not a recommendation of that.
No, but there's something to be said about preemptive marketing, maybe everybody's mindset.
Sure. And that's what I'm trying to do tonight. Maybe not effectively, but try. Okay, if you look at the per pupil expenditure chart that I gave you, and there's a whole lot more that goes into this. In fact, Brandon had asked me a question about one of the categories. This is information on page 25 from the Ohio Department of Education. And the real value of this kind of information is to look at it over time and to look at it relative to districts that are similar to you. And the districts that we're being compared to in this top bar chart are the districts that are determined by the Ohio Department of Education to be most like us, most like us. So even though they identify 21, these are the top four that are comparable to us. And you do notice that the group of five average versus our per pupil expenditure averages are higher. And it is important to know why. And I do have a more detailed report that I can share with you, and I'm happy to share with you, that will help explain this. But I did bring one page again, I apologize for handing it out tonight. But I do want to talk a little bit about those categories that go into that, and some of the bases that is a challenge for our spending because of the level of services that you provide. The second graph deals with the square footage that we have right now. And you can see that we are, we have been, we remain a huge outlier relative to the other four districts and the amount of square footage that they use to service their students. And we all know, sitting in the building that we're in, that the square footage is here and the students are not. And so that is part of the challenge that we have with the square footage that we're maintaining. That goes right back to what I said initially. The level of service that you provide with neighborhood schools, more buildings, more teachers, is going to cost more. It's going to be a more costly model than a district that is able to service, there are 1,800 ADM districts such as ours, a size, that have a K-12 building. But that's a different level of service compared to having a neighborhood school, for example.
So the challenge is, is how to optimize our square footage?
Part of that's going to help with enrollment as well. If we can improve that ratio, it'll affect it as well. But I also don't want to overcrowd our teachers either.
Sixth grade up here.
Right.
When I went here, it was sixth, seventh, eighth in this building, and it was a good utilization of space. It was the first two floors for sixth, middle for seventh, top floor for eighth, and it functioned very well. When you cram sixth grade into the elementary schools plus a preschool program, then teachers, like at View, are stuck in their closets and showers when they really need that space back. So I think putting sixth grade back in this building and having a middle school truly being the middle for those transitional years would be really helpful for us to utilize the space effectively, especially if this space is getting such an overhaul. It would be a great benefit to our students to be in this building once it's finished.
Right. But the one challenge that I see is, if we move sixth grade up here and we free up some of those classrooms in the elementary buildings, so do we bring in preschool? I mean, how do we make better utilization of those buildings or those extra classrooms? And if we bring in preschool, a lot of those kids may not count to our A and M number for the state.
Yeah, but if they start preschool, they might stay here.
Well, no, I understand that. Eventually, they're going to. But, but, you know, we're going to go through a couple of years, you know, because kindergarten doesn't count it either, right? They have to hit a certain age.
Can I make, I mean, I'll go back to Dr. Sabo's original comment. The fact is that this could be a half-day board retreat.
Right.
And some of the brainstorming here that we can actually try to put reasonableness with, rather than just straight brainstorming. But you can see that the work is occurring.
Yeah.
And so the thinking is occurring. And so it's finding the time and place as we head down that road with a great financial window right now to be able to use and not have to make a decision that was strictly based upon tomorrow, we don't have enough money or something.
Right, no, no. We're, we're
We have to need to balance out the elementary schools, too. Because if you look at those graphs, I mean, you got some classes, you got four.
Well, Chirpsburg has what, twice as many kids as?
I think it's important to note, and Scott mentioned this, and that is that that graph does not include Allison. So that is simply what we are presently using.
Right. That's a good point.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to keep pushing through what I want to cover.
No, no.
Which is, I do want to give you a couple of other documents, and there's, the two go hand in hand, so bear with me. I gave you, because, you know, I don't want to give you a 140-page benchmark report. I honestly think that would be a great board meeting, to just spend time in it and go through that. But I am going to send it out to you. It's bookmarked. Please don't hesitate to call me, but also keep in mind, and as part of Brandon's question today, I'm not in control of the data sets and everything that people put together, that the Ohio Department of Education puts out. That doesn't mean we can't get more information. We can. But we just have to be purposeful about that, or we'll end up chasing a lot of data and spending a lot of time on it and not knowing the decision we're going to make. I want to come back to this per pupil expenditure for a moment, and maybe it's reinforcing something that I'm over-reinforcing. But the level of service is so important to keep in mind in government. And we don't often talk that way or think that way, but neighborhood schools is a level of service. And that is something that costs money. And so far, the community here has supported that. I want to pick out one specific category, and then I'm going to give you a recap of all five categories that go into that total expenditure. And again, Amber said it's okay because she likes paper.
I like paper.
So I just, our day went a little bit fast today, and I did not get a chance to get these on Board Docs. And I think if I had given one more thing to Ms. Havlin to add to Board Docs, that you might be short of Ms. Havlin or me. And so we chose to take the safer route there and print a little paper, and Christine even helped me with that this evening. So I wanted to show you just, for example, the piece that I just handed out should have administrator, does everybody say administrator?
Administrator per pupil.
Per pupil expenditures.
That's interesting.
Amber, can I look at yours for a second?
Yeah.
And I want you to keep in mind, I'm going to, I wanted to kind of show you this first and then show you all five categories in the over/under. So when you saw the rest of the story here that exists, on the one hand, while I tell you that we spend more than our benchmark districts, the next question is rightfully, where do we spend it? What are we spending it on? And so the reason that I used administrative was to show you that it's not on administrative. You can agree or disagree that what we spend is too much or too little. But at the same time, when we compare it to benchmarks, we see that our administrative cost, even with maintaining additional building principles and the support that that takes, secretaries, technology, whatever it may be, we are able to really operate at a fairly respectable administrative cost level. And so we are, we are under that, but let's look where we are over. And it's actually a good story as long as our taxpayers continue to believe in the service that is being offered.
Since this is black and white, which one's more, the first one with the number?
Yes, it's just the same order, but I didn't, I didn't print it in color. But when you get it electronically, it'll be in color. But yes. Okay, so the piece that I'm handing out now tells you, for example, upper left-hand box, that we are spending $968 per kid more, per pupil more than the average of the group of five, which we're included in the average. Where are our biggest ups? Where are our biggest downs in the five categories that the Department of Education tracks? So for example, instruction, we spend almost $1,300 more per kid than the districts' average that are most like us. That's a good place to be as a board, as a, as a delivery of that service, because your expense is going into what goes directly to students in the form of instructional dollars. If you make yourself down to the next row, and we still go left to right, there you can see the administrative, which the reason I really only handed that out was to give you one to show this is how these numbers come about. But our administrative cost per pupil is actually $477 less per pupil than the districts most like us. And here's the one that always interests me. The building ops, which also includes utilities, we're actually very close to benchmark, at least at this particular benchmark. It doesn't mean this is a perfect benchmark or the right benchmark. We can discuss that if we get into benchmarking at a deeper level. But, you know, when you look at the square footage, the reality is that the excess square footage is costing us money in terms of light, heat primarily, because there's not air conditioning in this building. It's not that it's high cost directly associated with square footage. It just simply means we have more square footage than you need to serve the students that we have, if it were an ideal world and where you could put those students. The other thing that, when you look at pupil support, that is also direct student services, whether it's, can be counseling or psychologist or whatever it may be, you can see that we're also $155 over per kid, the benchmark group, and that on staff support, we're just about at our benchmark group. And so the data is good in terms of giving us an indication of where we put our money and the direct service to students. That doesn't mean, and we will not, continue to ask and look at how we can do that and the delivery in a more and more efficient way as we go forward. So this was just intended as part of the forecast to say, look, there are some expense challenges, but at the same time, there's some opportunity. And we, this warrants additional thinking and time and research on that. And, you know, I would suggest to you that on a lot of these topics we've had tonight, which are very involved, your administrative team has been working on, that is, warrants additional time outside of even a committee meeting where you're trying to get ready for the next board meeting.
I know, I totally agree with that. I do have one final question.
Okay, there was a pie chart that you had asked me about today, too, if you
Right, so the pie chart?
Mm-hmm.
And I'd asked you how some of those categories got put into, where they got put into. One other question I have regarding this pie chart is, is there any way that we could capture or track how much of that daily pupil cost shows up for us with outside grant money? So we are getting some grant money coming in.
You know, I can apply some, I think I can, in a credible way, apply some percentages to that.
I just want to know, like
This particular pie chart, by the way, is not something the Ohio Department of Education produces.
Right.
I do take this data, or this data is taken to produce that pie chart. And it's simply intended to say, put it in perspective of my day-to-day and your day-to-day, this is what it costs. And by the way, the range is all over the place. This is an average, and we have students that are very high-cost and students that don't cost as much. So, but yeah, I can look at that and see what portion, again, I have to get the crosswalk from the department to see what funds are in there.
Right.
And if those funds are grant funds versus not.
Right.
So I can work on that. It won't be immediate.
No, 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 no. But I just think, I think, well, Lisa would give me some perspective, you know, as we start looking at, you know, some revenue streams that we have coming in and, you know, a negative shortfall of operating expenses versus that, you know, doesn't make sense to continue that conversation of getting a professional grant writer in the district that could bump up that ratio of grant dollars coming into the district to help us out. So.
Thank you. I took a lot of time for that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
It's a lot of effort that you put in.
There's no vote on this tonight. We won't actually vote on the forecast until May, but I won't go through this again in May, if that's okay.
As long as the forecast isn't filled with more rain, I'm okay with it.
Okay, and more rain and snow at this point in time. Again, thank you very much.
Next item, renew a levy?
I think we talked about it a number of different other avenues.
Did we need every day of that?
Again, it wouldn't be new money, and of course, that's not until coming in '21. And I think it's important to point out that, you know, some superintendents say, every day, you're running a levy. And I think it's important that as we go about our work, we have to remember that we're providing a service, and we need to provide a high-quality service. And we need to be good about shouting all the great things that our teachers and students are doing. And so with our new initiative to work with Hamilton County on branding and marketing, I anticipate a renewed energy and effort to that. Well, John is with us, and we're so glad, John, you waited so long. Thank you for being patient. I think when you're doing construction, you have to be patient, don't you?
Absolutely.
So we're excited because we have a permit in hand, and we are very pleased about that. We've worked with Monarch to really start work as quickly as possible, and over spring break, they were able to, with no students here, get some work started. John, do you want to speak a little bit to that?
Well, we'll take advantage of the vacant building. We did jackhammer out where the elevator pit will eventually be. We knew there was going to be a sewage line underneath that floor. We were not aware that there was going to be electrical conduit underneath there that fed a breaker panel on the east wing. They put together a plan real quick in order to reroute the electrical line, which has been done, I think that was finished up late last week. The sewage line, originally, they thought was deep enough that it wouldn't be a problem, but when they moved, got rid of the concrete and looked and saw the sewage line, it was actually clay pipe. And they felt that the added four floors and shaft of, and the weight of the elevator itself, the clay pipe probably would not hold up to that. So it was determined that we should replace that with cast iron, and it actually had to be rerouted a little bit because you have to have a sump pit or a sump pump in the pit.
Right.
So they had to make room for that sump pump, and so we will reroute the sewage line. Fortunately, we have a licensed plumber on staff, Tim Bloom, so he's kind of been coordinating a crew, one of which I'm a member of, who are digging out the route and making it able to reroute the sewage line. So once we know exactly where the sump pump is going to be and we can determine how the pipe has to be rerouted, we will be continuing with that. Hopefully, that will be within sometime in the next week.
And we are very fortunate to have the in-house capability to do that and help contain that cost.
Absolutely, yeah.
So as the project is off the ground, for the most part, here at the middle school, we'll certainly turn our attention to the elementaries with regard to scope of the work. And just as a reminder, you know, our intentions a few years ago were safe, warm, and I'll say slash cool and dry. So we've worked on certainly that second set of entry doors. We've certainly tried to keep things dry by attention to the roof and the tuck pointing. And now we'll be looking at inside the building, the air conditioning, and perhaps a few other things in each of the elementaries. I do want to point out, though, that we do plan for a small kickoff ceremony on May 1st, because we worked with Monarch, and we promised that as of May 1st, the west wing would be completely vacated for them to really begin their work, because as you know, we have an August 17 deadline. Teachers will be back in-house then, so we want things to be as perfect as possible and ready to go. So we are going to vacate the space officially May 1st, the west wing, and allow them access. So we'll have a short ceremony here on the front lawn, about 2:30 on May 1st. That is a Tuesday, and we're looking forward to
Next item is the Department of Education expulsion hearing designated.
Sure. In the event that an expulsion hearing takes place and I make the decision, that, of course, could be appealed. And in the past, the board did have a representative to do that that was named. Actually, that person is ill. So what we intend to do is to work with our service center, which is Hamilton County Educational Service Center, and their assistant superintendent has agreed to serve in that capacity. And so we have reached out to him, and I'll be getting a contract together for you to approve next week.
Okay. So our next item would be going through our student field trips that we have coming up.
Thank you, Madam President. Looks like we just have one on the list coming up. The avenues for success, it's a mixed trip between high school and middle school students to the shadowy camp coming up. That's the only one that I was notified of as well through avenues so far.
So you'll see I have noted the acceptance of a resignation as well as employment. We have avenues for success and some certified supplemental contracts. We also have pupil activity contracts, so those are folks that were planning on working for us next year. I will say, some of them are working now in, in supplemental positions. And so generally, when I put someone on the agenda, they have all of their credentials in place, but these credentials actually will need to be renewed. And so that will take place, actually, by the end of June, they'll need to do that so that they can set, be ready to hit the field, the ground, the track, whatever you want to call it. So you'll notice some of these, we're working pretty far out ahead. So we will promise to monitor that credentialing so that they're ready to serve our students. You'll also notice our annual non-renewals. And those are things that happen every year for educational aides and our student assistant aides, and then our classified substitutes, as well as our avenues for success, club providers, and of course, the coordinator and the assistant program coordinator, and the physical therapist, and then a request for extended days for our preschool intervention specialist.
So on the non-renewal list, I do have a family member that's named on that list, so I will be abstaining.
That's right.
Right. So just so that everybody knows, when that comes up for a vote, I cannot vote on that.
Okay.
See, I vote to fire my sister every year. It's the only time I get to do that legally, and it's because you can vote to fire, but not to hire.
Hire.
Okay. So I'm just giving you a heads up. In your house, you probably want to abstain. My sister, I vote to fire her every single year. So. Or do you care?
Yeah, I watch your followers.
Like how you're admitting that on camera? I'm not voting.
Policies and regulations, policies and regulations, Brandon.
Yes, so as you see on this list, we will be doing our second reading of the policy revisions, and at the, immediately following the approval of the second reading, we'll be making a motion for them to be adopted. So all of that will take place.
No new ones yet?
No new ones.
You got lucky.
It's next, no news, all good news.
Buildings and grounds?
Yes, Madam President, we get to it. Yes, let's see, we got about, we got about four items on there for use of facilities to go over there. Little, little service, stepping stones, which are YMCA, and the oaks for the middle school auditorium. So everything is listed there. If anybody's got any questions or anything.
Please, all items. Remind me again what the levels are. Level C is we do not charge.
That's right.
Yes. These are all level Cs.
Next is the finance committee, Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. Building risk insurance, we're going to be seeking approval for that. I guess as for our contractors, the additional scope of architectural services will be on the agenda for approval as well. Approval of transfer, and on the, on the architectural services, there is an attachment there, so you can look at that and see. Approval of transfer of funds, this is, Mr. Strasser, would you like to?
This is strictly an internal. We have a line, a fund set up specifically for Chromebooks and Technology, and it's just taking it from like the, the main permanent improvement fund and putting it into that subcategory so that it's available. It's not a general fund transfer. In fact, these transfers can be made without a board approval, but I like to show them as well.
What are we going to do with the old Chromebooks? Are they just going to, are we going to be replacing them?
Do you get a recycle bonus or anything?
I think they're pretty much lifed out, but.
Yeah, they are lifed out. We do recycle them, but sometimes, in past, sometimes when we recycle things, they want to charge us. So it will be end of life, there will be nothing to use for these Chromebooks. So we'll work on recycling because we want to be good stewards of the earth.
Right, so we can't like donate them to another school that may be starting off with them or anything like that?
No, it would become really frustrating for that other school because they wouldn't be able to be serviced. So if they're almost, they're, they're rendered useless. Like we talked about that, could we donate them to individuals, but there'd be no service for them, so they wouldn't be able to do anything with it because when we take, when we take them, when they're no longer of our use to us, we have to take back our warranties, the amount we paid to have the service part of it, the amount we paid to have everything that makes it work.
I just remember we did that with the Appalachian. We'd sent, Scott had set that up and sent that down, that's why I was wondering.
Okay, thank you.
We have some construction testing. There's a tactic in that as well, a bunch of testing that's going to be going on with the construction project. Then we have our financial reports, the normal monthly financial reports, you know, to look through. Approval of the janitorial contract, this is a one-year contract that goes off the bid. So you, you can see the bidding on that, and the recommendation will be for, for the continuance of the current scarlet and gray.
Wow, so to, so I.
Twenty thousand dollars less than what we had previous.
No, I, I understand that, but the level of service that we've gotten from scarlet and gray. So again, this is one of those things where, you know, I want to be good stewards of our money, but I don't want to suffer through poor quality of service. So we definitely need to make sure.
We're on top of that contract.
We're on top of that contract, and if they're not living up to what's in that contract, then, you know, we need to be on them.
And this contract is only for next 2018, 2019?
That's correct. And during the which time, we will be in an evaluation of possibly bringing this back in-house as, as an option.
Yeah, that was my next, right, that was my next question.
I like the idea of giving them the year to really evaluate.
It gives us a year, too, to get them ready to go. Right.
Yeah.
Then there is a power line project we have to, to extend the power lines, I guess? Is that what?
We're bringing more power in, obviously. There's going to be more power needed, and it was part of the original scope of the project. And this is just a specific contract with Duke to, to make that extension.
And then the change order procedures, that's, was Duke all for us?
And I'd like to give, if it's okay, Scott, just a little bit of background on that. You know, we have spent a lot of time with the architect, and to the questions earlier about the construction project, we may not be doing a good job of explaining all the steps because there are a lot of steps. But this is just one example where we literally had differences of opinion in terms of how the change orders would be handled. As you know, with a construction project, we can't stop for even a $2,000 or $3,000 change order because it goes back to your question, Amber, about, well, you know, there's a schedule here, how do you maintain it? But how do we bring that accountability starts with the document I sent you several weeks ago, which was, we're not just tracking, I, I have no idea what other schools are doing. But we aren't just tracking this project and the success of this bidding, and the success of the project will be determined when it's completed. But if you remember, I said, well, it's good news, but don't celebrate. Let's look at this whole project, and we put the savings in place relative to the whole project. We're doing that every month.
Right.
We're tracking that budget every month. We will feed these change orders in. Some of the things we learned from the first round of work was that, that the architect evidently didn't understand our expectation about timeliness, and that we want those now, whether they're as material as someone else may think or not. We want that plugged into the budget. We want to be looking at that every month. We do have, we do have a contingency fund. I'm not going to talk forever about the contingency fund because our job's not to spend it.
Right.
The more I talk about it, the more people want to spend it. So we're not going to talk about it. But we do have a contingency fund. We do believe that it's adequate to take care of. But at the same time, if something in the building is found that wasn't anticipated, we're coming back to you, and we're going to talk about that, and we'll have to figure out what our steps are.
I want it, I want it done right, and if they find something wrong, I hope that we can, as a board, make sure that we make timely decisions to get those things added in, get those change orders done.
And that's what this change order is trying to do. We tried to find, there are, the architect has explained to us, anyway, that there are districts that have way larger limits than what we have in here.
Yeah.
So we may be asking you for special board meetings to review, we'll send you the change order in advance and to consider that. We may send you some post-approval because they fit this guideline and we're able to approve those. So the biggest thing we can do is watch that budget every month. I believe that our architect's committed to that. I like the document that I sent to you a few weeks ago. We'll be updating that. We have cash flow estimates for this project all the way through 2021. That's as much for investment, but also helps us to understand that we're still in line with where we should be. So there, there are many controls in place that's hard to articulate, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try. And so we, we will work harder at that. But look this document over. Please let us know your questions between now and the board meeting. Just know that there is no perfect document, and at the same time, we can't come before you and manage a seven and a half million dollar project at every thousand-dollar turn. We're just going to control those thousand-dollar turns. And part of that was what I emailed you today, which we'd already told you there was the electrical change order, but this is what it's going to cost, and this is how it'll be monitored. And, you know, I, I think it's, even though we didn't want it on the first week of the job, you know, it's there and it's being dealt with. And how much better to deal, to your point, Amber, to deal with clay tile, the architect never proposed, hey, just let's see if it'll hold up. No. I mean, it started out with, and John being involved in it led immediately to, let's see if we happen to have a licensed pipe fitter and, you know, person on the, the job. Can we do that in-house and make that project more cost-effective? So those are good things. We'll continue, we can always do a better job to keep you in the loop of what's going on there. I just want to circle back to, for a moment, to the builder's risk and what that, and by the way, there's, there are retainers, there are requirements of the contractor in terms of, that they don't get all of their money at once. Builder's risk is a different animal. That's always the owner's obligation to purchase, and it protects us in terms of materials stored on site, just like you would protect the items in this building, with Buildings and Grounds Insurance. So it's our coverage that we buy through our current Liberty Mutual Insurance Company, and that will be on there. And I apologize for not having the attachment. I just noticed that it was not there. We will have that as part of the meeting.
Okay.
Then the only other item we have is the approval of the realtor for the Allison project. We, we do have a recommendation, it's listed here, and this is the one that Miss Sable will be working with to get him through Allison, fire to, hopefully fire to the meeting next week. And then that includes all, all our house contracts.
Anyone have anything else?
Just had a quick question. You said the, the groundbreaking event thing, you said May 1st, 2:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
2:30 to about 2:45.
Here.
It's a Tuesday on May the 1st.
Okay.
On the front lawn.
Front lawn.
Providing it doesn't snow. Or rain.
I have a motion to adjourn.
All motion?
Miss Amber?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Don't say it.
Second by Mr. Faulkner.
Bauer, excuse me, Bauer?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yeah.
Bryant?
Yeah.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Snelly eggs.